Testing one, two. Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
Councilwoman Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilwoman Corbett?
Present.
Councilwoman Geddings?
Here.
Councilor Robach?
Here.
Mayor Portem Saltes?
Yeah.
Mayor Greyston?
I am here, thank you. First up this evening, we've got the invocation by Councilman Geddings, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
We thank God for having given us this opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. We've got to do the approval of the agenda, so are there any additions or deletions or changes from council at this time?
Your Honor?
It's Corbett.
It's not really an addition, it's a rearrangement, if we could. I would move to put, I'm sorry, I lost it. What's the?
It's D2.
D2 to the first position, under the section, and then everything else in the flow from there.
That's fine, thank you. So a motion has been made to swap D1 and D2, just the order. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. All right, we're changing the order of the reports. Is there anything else that council wants to add, or delete, or change to the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none. First up, we have a presentation. Mrs. Marsh, the proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week.
Yes, City Council is scheduled to present this proclamation to Fire Marshal Paul Bolliti. Whereas the city of Madison Heights is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Madison Heights, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Madison Heights residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of the alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas residents will make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities, and whereas Madison Heights first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas in 2021, fire prevention theme, Learn the Sound of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council does hereby proclaim October 3 through the 9, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and we urge all residents to check their smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. Be it further resolved that all residents are encouraged to participate in many fire safety activities being held during the fire department's open house, which is Saturday, October 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So with that, Paul?
Thank you, sir. Good work. You and the team. Thank you.
Just want to take a moment to thank Fire Marshal Bolliti for everything that he does for the city. He goes above and beyond on a regular basis. I was at a grand opening a few months ago, and they couldn't stop raving about him. They're just so happy with everything he's done. And for those of you who aren't aware, in the spring, the fire department was selling shirts, and they were autism awareness shirts, and that was to go help for funding for a playground at Healing Haven, which is just across 13 mile, and that was strictly something that our fire department did on their own. So they don't just come here, do their job, and go home. They really are part of the community, and they give every day. So on behalf of myself and the residents, thank you for everything that you do. All right. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to come and to address council. I ask that you come up to the podium, limit your comments to three minutes, give your name, address any affiliation with the city, and then when we are done, the clerk does have a few comments that she will be reading. So with that, I open it to, please, ma'am, up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a taxpaying resident in Madison Heights. I have been for 36 years. A few things have concerned me while viewing prior City Council meetings. Members of the City Council should act and dress in a professional and mature manner while attending any City Council meeting, whether in person or via Zoom. This behavior should not be ignored by any elected official in the city, or the behavior psychoanalyzed to justify by any person seeking the office, as it was in the June 14 meeting. They should represent our city as a whole, not their own personal agenda. No social justice or identity politics. I had a huge concern over a statement made at the June 14 City Council meeting at the 59-minute mark by someone running for City Council. Mr. Wright stated, and I quote, "There is a culture of white supremacy embedded deep within the roots of this city." Unquote. Examples, please. Quote, "We need to recognize our racism. It is seeping through the pores of this city. Racism, prejudice, bigotry is embedded in our community. Making a broad statement such as that about the city as a whole just seemed outrageous to me. That type of language is not going to unite anyone, and it will only divide people. I believe people are getting saturated with everything lately in this country being viewed through the prism of race. Content of character should always prevail. As a city, we are better than that." In closing, I would like to read a quote. I've had this quote saved for years. Tonight, I would like to share it with you. It is for anyone wishing to divide this city. Our world is not divided by race, color, gender, or religion. Our world is divided into wise people and fools, and fools divide themselves by race, color, gender, or religion. Nelson Mandela. Thank you. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address council this evening?
Good evening. My name is Deliza Lee. I reside at 31800 Carlo Drive here in Madison Heights. My pastor and I yesterday had a meeting, and along with our trustees, and we understand, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay.
You're fine.
We feel it's very important for people to understand and meet our candidates that's running this year. So we would like to open our doors for all the candidates to come in and have like a forum, they can place their platform and talk about, you know, just meet the, you know, the city to meet the candidates. Our date we've chosen is October 23. You can call the church or email the pastor, and his email address is D R R K D I G G S at gmail dot com. And I'm here for all the candidates here, and those that may not be here to attend the church. We're trying to get the may not be here to attend the church. We're trying to get the form together so people can come in and meet the candidates in person. I know these are some hard times due to COVID, but we're trying to open our doors for the community. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, October 23rd, from 12 to 3. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who has any comments they want to make this evening, please, sir? Hold on. You're next. No, go ahead. No, you're fine. You're fine. You're fine. You got there first. You're fine.
Hi, Vita Palazzolo, 250 East 13 Mile, number one. Hello, council. I'm not sure if this is something that needs to go to code enforcement, or if it's personal homeowner. So I'm just going to give you my observation of what I found Saturday afternoon. I was helping someone campaign and going house to house, and being somebody who has a disability, I know people know I've got MS, but I get around pretty darn good for an old 61-year-old woman. So, but I noticed a lot of the porches, the steps were either in somewhat of need of repair, but the majority of the steps to the porches were very high. I would say even an able-bodied person that might be under, or my 5'4", somewhere like that, would have a hard time getting that leg up, you know, to the first step. And many of them did not have railings. So I found it difficult, and, you know, a couple that had the ring on their doorbell, they got a good show of me balancing and, you know, on a surfboard. So, but whether this is something that goes to the ADA, you know, outside of the city, or like I said, if it's a code thing, or if it's something the city wanted to take up with those with, you know, disabilities, just wanted to throw it out there because, you know, like I said, I get around pretty darn good, but if somebody else can't, I would hate to see anybody have to, first of all, get injured terribly, or a lawsuit coming against someone that just was, and I use this in a very non-discrimination, discriminating way, that was just very ignorant to the fact that, you know, the step was too high. So that's what I got for you today. Thank you all, and hang in there, candidates, and please take care of each other. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to go ahead, please? Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Paul Sanders. I live at 26433 Rialto Street here in Madison Heights. Now, there's two things I'd like to bring up. The first one, I'd really, really, really like to thank you. Couple years ago, I complained about the road out there by the, by the library and going down the police department. Everybody went, "Well, yeah, take some money," and da-da-da-da. Well, I noticed when I went to pay my water bill last time, we've got a brand-new stretch of concrete, and it sure looks nice, and it makes a real good impression on the city of Madison Heights, especially for young kids coming to use the library and other people. Okay, that's, that's the easy one. The other one, I keep getting a magazine in the mail, and it's out of, down that odd place on the other side of 696. I think they call it Hazel Park. It's a nice paper, kind of, because it talks about Hazel Park in Madison Heights. It had a section this last issue about the different people that are running for election this year. Well, for this election. And I have a question. I don't know if you have to answer it, if you want to or not. The young lady that's currently our mayor was very open and honest about the fact that she comes from Canada. Okay, my mother was born in Canada, too, to American parents. But I'm wondering, are you a citizen of the United States, or are you a citizen of Canada? Do you salute the American government, or do you represent the Queen over in England? So if you would, could you answer that? Are you an American, or are you a Canadian? Well, are you in the United States, or?
I'm a naturalized citizen. I naturalized in December 2008. So I'm a naturalized citizen.
You are currently an American citizen.
Yes. I would not be able to vote, and I would not be able to be council mayor, anything, if I were not a citizen.
Well, thank you. That's good to know, because it wasn't specked up in the article.
Oh.
So thank you. You'll have a good one.
All right. Does anybody else have any public comment that? Ma'am, you'll, no, you're fine. You're fine. Ma'am, you'll be next. You'll be, you'll be after.
Hello, Jennifer Zmarzlik, 649 East Harwood. This comes in a difficult, once again, I have to spring this up. Thank you, Mayor, though, for bringing up a report from our attorney on censorship and banning by elected officials. I was unable to defend myself from previous closing comments council member made. I was not able to rebut these claims, clear my name, or to object to serious allegations. If I do not rebut her claims, it will become truth. Consider this my statement of affidavit of truth in the matter of harassment from this council member in these chambers. I am not guilty of harassment of any kind to any worker or city worker or elected official. I've never posted harassing statements. I would not and did not put dead animal body parts in their yard. On another matter, I've been put into a position where disclosure of our city charter being challenged in 2020 by a City Council member allegedly intending to defraud our city employees, officials, and residents must be, must be brought forth at the risk of my own reputation and possible effects to my income in commerce. The only recourse I have is using public notice and procedural actions, that is by first referencing the municipal league. No person shall be eligible for an elective office or appointed to city office who is in default to the city. Cities have the ability to control permits on how long our grass can grow, or if a broken vehicle is parked on the property too long, or how many puppies and kittens can be inside a home. Per our charter, we also have the control to remove a council member. We need to have courage to follow procedures set up in 1955 in our city charter. In 2015, a home was purchased, and three years of consistent non-payment of house taxes and water bills, beginning almost immediately after the sale, followed through with a full forfeiture on the house on March 31st, and turned over to the county's possession eight to nine months before an elected candidate wins a seat on City Council in 2019. Intent to fraud residents may be built on years of non-payment and choosing to run for office after a house foreclosure, while campaigning for eight to nine months, just might look like intent. Negligence of paying taxes can be corrected quickly by remedy in place for decades. Currently, our city charter references that it is the city's obligation to deny a resident to run for office if money is owed to the city, and that would be any amount. Timelines between the city and the county do not like to block the rights of resident taxpayers to have full disclosure of this information, especially before an election. I am seriously concerned that a member of our council makes decisions on our behalf while deceiving the public about homeownership, the struggles of paying taxes and bills. Responsible taxpayers do not question the fact of utilities, property, house, and business taxes, that they are a normal way of living. The respect a City Council member should put forth with good faith to constituents in making decisions on our behalf is imperative. While I must come forth and bring these facts that this council member has not only put our city in jeopardy of lawsuits, but our employees and elected officials, as they may be, by broader picture, included in this fraudulent behavior by not addressing it, who, what, where, when, and how, can only be decided in a discovery process, which I do not look forward to put our tax dollars or attorneys through, was there misrepresentation. Section 2 dash, Section 2-111 of our charter, removal of members and filling of vacancies. Members other than the members selected by the council may, after a public hearing, be removed by the mayor for insufficiency, neglect of duty, or malfeasance in office. At this time, I, Jennifer Zmarzlik, a 22-year homeowner, make a formal demand that this council member be removed from office due to malfeasance in office by alleged intent to hide information from council members, constituents, city employees, and our elected officials in the great city of Madison Heights, Michigan. Fraud while campaigning as an elected member of council is my reason. I also demand that removal is immediate, and the next hot vote receiver be put into the said member's seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zmarzlik. All right, ma'am, if you'd like.
Hi, my name is Marie Fox. I live on Spoon Avenue. Marie Fox, I live on Spoon Avenue. My question, I actually have a question, and maybe a request. I am very curious about why our city is not a member of SACRA. You know, there's times where you need to take electronics, shred paper. I know we're having a shredding event in Madison Heights next month, but why can't, why aren't we a member of SACRA? And when can we become a member? And when will our own, I guess we have some kind of recycling thing here in Madison Heights that closed during COVID? But I'm just curious about that. And is there a way that we can get back into SACRA? What's going on with that? That's my question.
Your Honor?
Please.
Be happy to answer that for Ms. Fox. Late 1990s, council voted to remove ourselves from SACRA, as I recall, due to issues we had with their decision-making process, issues that we thought had a negative impact on the community, and we were involved in litigation, and I can't really comment on the litigation, other than one of the issues was getting our equity out of SACRA, which occurred. And since that time, we've not been members of SACRA. And as a matter of fact, since we no longer were members of SACRA, this council and this city got better rates for waste hauling in the interim than that consortium got as 12 communities or so. We did better than they did on our own.
Okay. So what are you doing about recycling electronics in Madison Heights? Because there's nowhere I can recycle electronics in Madison Heights.
Well, I can tell you that we, I can't answer about specifically recycling electronics, but I can tell you that the city of Madison Heights was one of the first cities in the state of Michigan to adopt a curbside recycling program. And I can't tell you what year it was, but it was leased, I'm going to say leased, 25 or 30 years ago.
Yeah, that's great. You know, the thing is, you cannot put.
SACRA, SACRA does have recycling days, both here, I don't know if they have it here, but they certainly have it at their Troy facility, and I don't, I don't think there's anything prohibiting you from recycling electronics when they have their days. Usually it's a couple times a year. I think once in the spring and once in the fall. So I would, I would check directly, directly with them.
The only recycling that they have for electronics is if you're a member, if you are a resident of one of the member communities, which we are not. So that leaves me with, where do I go?
Your Honor, I know in my community, I've recycled things where no one asked me where, what city I lived, and people lined up for quite a distance on a Saturday when they had their recycling days and were able to drop off whatever we needed to recycle.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett.
I was just going to throw in, yes, it was, back at the time we withdrew, it was cost. It was, and it was not small, and it was projecting, the previous council had projected a significant increase over the short term, and that was the last thing we needed. As far as, as far as electronics, conveniently enough, we have an environmental committee, which does, which is just starting to kind of ramp back up. And I, who's our rep there? Is that Emily? I think you and Emily should chat, and, and she could probably take care of you on that. Councilwoman Roebuck, pardon me.
Thank you.
Yes. But that's, that's your person.
Okay, great. Thank you. I will be in touch with you. Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to?
I am Sean Fleming. I live at 27120 Barrington Street, right here in Madison Heights. Counsel, I am here today to clear some statements that were made in some of the HREC meetings about myself. One council member, in one of the meetings, when we first started meeting, had said that there had been a police report filed against myself, and I want to clear that with the record that I had FOIA'd the police department, and there is no such report on file. Further, in the last meeting before I resigned, I was accused of sabotaging the HREC, and this has no, no merit to it. The facts are that during this meeting, we canceled a subcommittee meeting that I was part of, and the meeting was canceled by the other member of the subcommittee. I sent all the correspondence of this meeting to the HREC, all of the email about the meeting being canceled, so that HREC could review it, and that's the matter at hand. The meeting was not sabotaged by myself. And finally, I wanted to address the hate speech that has been said about my wife and myself by members of the public. I'm appalled that my wife and myself were called Nazis after being appointed to our respective commissions. I'm asking that this council make a statement to condemn this kind of hate speech, and that's all I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Is there anyone else, any other?
Good evening, Martha Corbett, 28609 Edward Avenue. Mr. Corbett, I thank you for not wanting me to resign from the HREC. I have to. It's not, and I don't want this to be taken wrong, honestly, I don't. But I think the HREC is supposed to bring people together. It's not supposed to divide. All I saw is a divide. Whether it was I said something that possibly members didn't like, or they said something that I, I wish we could have all got along and just tried to make things work for the city. That's not what's happening, okay? And instead of standing here and saying, "You said that, I said this, you said that," I'm not going to do that, because all that does is create a bigger divide. That's not going to help to bring things back together where they need to be. We said at the last HREC meeting, and I'm sorry, but we said last HREC meeting, we were going to start fresh. Everything was going to be new. We were going to try just to be adults about things. And that's what I think people are trying to do, but social media gets in the way, and gets just everything crazy. If people would stop, stop. Before you hit that enter button, read what you're writing. Read what you're saying that could hurt somebody. I'm, I'm very tough-skinned, and I'm a little snotty, you know. Anyway, and that's just, so for me, it doesn't hurt my feelings, but maybe it hurts her feelings or his feelings. Think about what you're writing. That's what I want. People think about it. I had a speech, but it's like, you know what? There was too much pettiness in it, so it's not going to go that way. I can't do that. Stay in here and say, "I want to bring us together," and then be all petty and stupid? No, makes no sense. But I do want everyone to know that on the agenda was going to be the communications, video communications policy or something it said?
Social media.
Okay, social media. There you go. People are going to watch what's said about it. People are going to, if it's voted on, people are going to watch how you vote on it. That's going to be a big deciding factor in the city. Big decisions. People are talking about that a lot. I wish social media could have stayed a nice, simple place to do, and be, it's not now, it's a harassing thing, and I just, I just wish the, okay, the crime commission, we took, we signed an agreement that we were going to be kind, and we were going to not do bad things on social media, let's put it that way. But I want you guys held to that same accountability that my committee is held to. Every commission should be held to some form of accountability. It's not. That's not right. I'm a taxpayer, you're a taxpayer, you're a taxpayer. Shouldn't we all be held to the same accountability? I get that you have more going on because of what's here, and we don't know what's going on behind the scenes of council all the time, and totally get it. But I'm tired of the hate. I'm tired of it. And from somebody that can be snotty and mean, for me to be tired of it, I, there's people probably drowning. They can't take anymore. So can we please just stop and try to be good to each other?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who had anything they wanted to, one more person? Please go ahead.
Good evening, council. My name is Quinn Wright. I'm the chairman of the HREC. I come to you guys today to echo a similar message, asking for some civility, asking for you guys, as the leaders of the city, to promote civility. It's been said a few times to me that I have talked about race in the city. And yes, as a black man in the city, and as the chairman of the HREC, that is to be expected. But it's not to spread division, it is to recognize But it's not to spread division, it is to recognize my humanity. To deny my blackness is to deny my humanity, and I wouldn't want to deny that to myself or what I want to deny to any of my white counterparts. And so, as the chairman of the HREC, I want to invite all of you to encourage discourse with not just the echo chambers of people who agree, but those who disagree. When the HREC came together, the point was to try and do some good things, and we did. We did the Juneteenth celebration on the first time it was made a national holiday, and that was awesome, and it made the city look great. And so, we continue to do those type of things, but I want to encourage you all to make it an effort to ensure that we're being equitable, inclusive, and that we're ensuring that we're talking to each other about what's going on. There's been a lot of statements made lately about things that I've said. I would encourage everyone to check out any city council you've not been to, or come talk to me. And I would challenge you guys to talk to me about diversity, equity, and inclusion, what that means to me. And if I am talking about race, I would encourage you guys to come ask me why I'm talking about race. You guys have a great day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who had anything they wanted to say this evening? All right, I'm going to close public comment. We do have four comments that are being read into the record by the clerk, though.
Okay, the first email says, Dear council members, my name is Tina Maddox. I live at 943 East Roland Avenue. I'm writing to you in regards to the social media policy before you today. Back in May of this year, I was not only removed, but banned from the Friends of Madison Heights Facebook page, a page I had been a member of since it started years ago by Ronnie Brewster. There was a post regarding the Memorial Day Parade not being held. Councilwoman Roebuck posted an image of the women's club saying why it would not be held. A woman who I shall not name then posted, then posted in reply that it is where you turn off comments so that uneducated can read. To where I left at the comment and told Mr. Roebuck, thank you for not silencing your constituents and for posting this information. That was it. Next thing I know, I'm removed and banned from the page, so I messaged all the admins of the group on May 19, 2021. I would like to know why I was removed and blocked from the Friends of Madison Heights group. No warning, nothing. What rules was, what rule was broken? I do believe that Ms. Blank was very disrespectful in her tone. Was she also removed and blocked? Ruth Huey stated that. There isn't any notes in admin log, so I don't know the history of why. Sorry, I can't help with it. Kim Clark replied hours later with this. Tina was removed for repeatedly trash-talking the admins and goading and harassing other residents in several comment sections, not just in our group, but several others. They repeatedly carried on toxic threads. I have spoke with Ronnie, and he is in support. Ruth Huey then agreed to stand behind that decision. No other admins responded. Kim Clark takes it upon herself to remove anyone she chooses for her own reasons. She makes up whatever she feels is reason enough for her own agenda. If you align with her, you stay. If not, if not, or you disagree with her, friends, you go. She has done this to so many residents of this community. She says threads are toxic because they are exposing the truths. I have never, ever harassed anyone on any group. I've posted and stated actual facts regarding secret conversations to expose what the public should know. Public officials have no place in admin position to where they can censure the public in any way. I agree with everything on the social media policy. For this reason, I ask you to vote for the social media policy into place. Thank you very much, Tina Maddox. The next email is, says, Hello, Mayor, Graffstein and City Council. I have in the past advocated for a social media policy for council members, city administrators, and board members. It makes sense to require all representatives of the city to behave in civil manner towards their neighbors and fellow commissioners, board members, and council members. However, I ask that you consider, reconsider the policy as written, considering, one, it only applies to council members. If we're implementing a social media policy, we should talk, we should ask all commissioners and board members to adhere to it. For example, commissioners and board members who use their platform to attack private citizens and actively mobilize their social media groups against the goals of the commission they sit on, or provide space or post content for disparages, that disparages Madison Heights residents on the basis that race, religion, gender, identity, sexuality, immigration status, disabled status, age, or economic status should be censured. Two, it is so vague as to simultaneously, it is so vague as to be simultaneously unenforceable, and also to act as fodder for endless public comment and complaints about who said what on Facebook. Three, additionally, it calls into question First Amendment rights around freedom of speech and freedom of association. Four, it leaves no provision for what council members can do to protect themselves from harassment or bullying. We have seen an increase in politically, racially, and religiously motivated attacks at council and school board meetings. We should not require our civil servants or elected leaders to allow access to themselves 24/7 in order for them to serve. I am fully supportive of a comprehensive, well-researched, clearly defined social media policy for our council members, commissioners, and board members. As written, this policy is immense a mess. Thank you, Sean Force. Okay, the next one says, Hello, Cheryl, will you please read the following at the council meeting tonight? A social meeting, media policy like the one proposed is unnecessary. Elected officials have official city council representative pages to share official city business and information. These official pages should be the only activity considered official city business. No constituent should have the right and access to council persons at all times. There are people who, who do intend harm, whether physical, emotional, and officials should not have to be subjected to this kind of harassment whenever they choose to use social media privately. If this reaches, if this reaches the boards and commissions, I know many volunteers on our boards and commissions will have to seriously reevaluate our roles on these boards. I have had experience myself with harassments, both verbally and physically, by some of the same people who have spoken in support of a policy like this. I have reached out to city council representatives about this problem and how words can turn into actions, how I was physically harassed at a city event, and continued to fear for my safety when in the public. We have already lost many great volunteers to this endless fight, and this experience is scaring away potential talent for our boards and commissions. It is very easy to understand that posts shared outside of a council person's official social media page should be not considered city business. Please let our elected officials also maintain their autonomy, as just parents, or just neighbors, or just business persons outside of official city business capacity. We all need a way to tune it all out and allow healthy boundaries between being a representative and just being human. Thank you for listening. Crystal Fox, resident volunteer on the ECC. And the last one, it says, Greg Richards, 30379 Westmore Drive, Madison Heights. I am writing in today to voice my complaint about the ongoing censorship on many of the Madison Heights Facebook pages by one of our city councilwomen. City Councilwoman Kim Clark admins a number of these Facebook sites and uses them for city business and city announcements. I have had a number of my comments and posts removed off these sites, not because they were in violation of Facebook rules, but because they did not fit the narrative of Kim Clark. This cannot be legal. She was elected to be the voice of the people. Why is she now censoring them? As a resident of Madison Heights, I fully support the social media policy for elected officials in our city.
All right, thank you, Cheryl, and thank you, everyone who spoke this evening. Up next, we have communications. We have the resignation from the HREC from Martha Covert. Do we have a reporter? All right. And then we have the report. So we're doing the swap. We're going to do, oh, sorry, do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
Your Honor, I'm making a motion.
Thank you. Is there support? Your Honor? Support? Thank you, motion?
Your Honor? I'd amend the, I would request to amend it with a letter of appreciation, certificate of appreciation for the, if the maker and supporter would be willing.
Letter of support, appreciation?
Yeah, of course. I think, I thought that was like what we always do. Yeah.
Your Honor?
All right. Yes, and we're going to declare the seat vacant.
The maker of the motion and support, yes, should also include and declare the seat vacant. Thank you.
Yes, I am in support of that.
I agree. All right, so we have a motion on the table to accept with thanks and recognition the resignation of Martha Covert from the HREC, and then to declare the seat vacant. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. Motion carries. Mrs. Covert, thank you for your work for the last year at the HREC. This seat is now vacant. All right, we have three items under reports. The first one we're going to do is from the city manager. It's the John R. Rightofway dedication.
It was recently discovered that Madison Center, which fronts John R. 12 Mile and Dartmouth Street, currently includes the eastern boundary to the center line of John R. Road. This portion of John R. within the property boundary should have been dedicated to the city of Madison Heights as part of the original shopping center development. As such, Madison Center Owners LLC is seeking formal dedication of this right-of-way, which the city currently maintains as currently included in our Act 51 allocation. Legal descriptions have been reviewed by the city engineer who recommends approval. Accordingly, staff recommends that the city council adopt the attached right-of-way, right-of-way for public roadway and public utilities dedication, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign for the city. This will accept the sections of John R. Road in front of Texas Roadhouse and in front of McDonald's to the center line. An attorney, Nick Gutman, is in attendance today to answer any questions and add more to the conversation.
Mr. Gutman, please go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, Your Honor, counsel and clerk and city manager. I am Nick Gutman of Troutman Pepper Hamilton Sanders, on behalf of my client, Madison Center Owner LLC. And as Ms. Marsh indicated, we provided deeds, draft deeds, to convey the right-of-way to the city. And I spoke with counsel, city attorney, Mr. Sherman. There are surveyors currently confirming the legal descriptions. There may be decimal places that are moved, but no, no material changes. And so, we request the city's acceptance of the right-of-way, subject to possible replacement of the legal descriptions. I can answer any question.
Well, first, let's see, what is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Please.
I move that we adopt the attached right-of-way for public roadway and public utilities dedication, and then subsequently authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign for the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support?
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions, or questions for the attorney? Counsel? Questions, discussion? No? All right, thank you, Mr. Gutman. It appears there's no questions for you.
Thank you.
All right, and seeing there's no discussion, what is the wish of counsel?
We did that.
Or, sorry, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up, we have from the city attorney, the social media policy for elected officials.
At the request of the mayor, legal counsel developed a social media policy for elected officials for council consideration. And it was about one page.
I don't think we need to read it, because all of counsel has-
Your Honor, can I request that we read it, please?
Sure.
We have a lot of public comment based just on this policy. So I think it would be within everyone's best interest to hear it.
In the interest of promoting an open and transparent government with the public and preventing a potential censorship of the First Amendment-protected forums and speech, City Council of Madison Heights adopts the social media policy for elected officials applicable to each council member. The term "social media" is defined as websites and digital applications where people create, share, and exchange content and ideas through the internet network and virtual communities. Examples of social media websites and applications include, but are not limited to, Facebook, Instagram, LinkedIn, Reddit, TikTok, Twitter, and YouTube. Any social media account that council members utilize for engaging with constituents or discussing matters related to city business will not restrict access in any capacity to the public, including blocking or banning people. Council members shall not use social media as a mechanism for conducting official city business, and it will be used exclusively for informal communications with the public. Council members shall be mindful of the risk of social media communication in regards to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and communication between members of the body on social media, whether directly between one another or as part of a conversational thread among multiple parties, should be strictly avoided. Council members' social media posts are, in their capacity as an elected official, are the property of the state of Michigan, therefore should not be deleted and must be maintained in compliance with the city's record retention schedule. Council members shall conduct themselves on social media with the same professionalism and decorum as if they were communicating in public while attending a council meeting. Council members shall not share non-public or confidential information related to city business and operations. If a council member makes a mistake or error in a communication, it shall be corrected as soon as the official is made aware of it. Council members shall not use official city of Madison Heights social media sites for campaigning purposes. Council members will abide by the rules and policies applicable to city employees when engaging in the use of social media. A council member may be censored by the body for violations of this social media policy.
All right, thank you. And I believe there was a typo at the bottom that is to be censured, not censored.
Your Honor, that's correct.
Pardon?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion that we table this discussion indefinitely.
All right, thank you. Is there support? All right, so anybody else would like to make a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to adopt.
Move to adopt? All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Support?
All right, thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to adopt this policy. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I just have maybe a question that the city attorney can answer. Could you, real quick, for everybody watching, explain why this social media policy is being brought to the table, and cite specific references of instances that have made it so that this is necessary to have? And then, can you also address specifically how this policy will help to relieve whatever, whatever actions brought it to the table?
Your Honor?
Mr. Sherman?
First of all, the policy was brought to the council at the request of the mayor. Second of all, the, the purpose for the social media policy is essentially as follows. When an elected official engages in public comment relating to city business, whether it be on a private Facebook page, whether it be on a city-sponsored Facebook page, you are in a public forum, and when you are in a public forum, members of the public cannot be banned or blocked, otherwise you're violating, potentially violating their First Amendment right, and could be accused of engaging in viewpoint discrimination and violating their First Amendment right. If a council member has a private Facebook page and does not mix any city business with, it's just personal pictures of family, all personal, they're not mixing city-related business with their own personal lives, that person, whether elected official or not, has the right to block whomever they would like. But not, where you cross the line is when you mix city business on a private page, whether you're the administrator or whether you're involved. And one of the problems is, is the technology is such that if you block someone on a private page, it could serve to block them on a city-sponsored public page, like the city's Facebook page, and as a result of that-
That's actually not true.
Well, if that happens, that, that is a form, that is a, that is a form of censorship that is not going to be supported by, by the courts based upon decisions that have already, that have already been made and are contained in our legal opinion. But that's, that's the overview.
Follow-up question to that is, the ECLU states that in order for a person's, like a public official's private account to be upheld to those standards of, like, being a public official using it to create city business, which I have more to talk on about that, they would have to prove that that account was being used exclusively for city business. So, for an example, I, I promote restaurants and places all over the city of Madison Heights all day, every day. I promote the city events that I attend, whether I had a hand in planning it or not. I send videos and everything, and I do all that through my personal account. But we don't have a clear definition here in this example of exactly what city business is. So if we were to adopt this, I would want that in writing, so that as a city council member, I would be able to look and see exactly what the standards that I need to be set to are, so that I could follow them accordingly. And then, I guess, like, another question that I had was, I would like to see more specifics about what is considered city business, so that we can be sure that we don't make any mistakes there. And then, when you talk about a city account, I know you kind of covered this a little, it was, it sounded a little muddy to me. Does this mean that we would have to take our personal accounts, if we've ever shared anything about the city, and open them up to people who we have blocked for harassment, for our own safety, or for any reason?
Well, there's a-
Or does that just, I mean, does it, is it referring to our city council, like, page of us as a city council person? Or does it also encompass our private accounts?
I would say that the legal opinion sets forth examples of do's and don'ts, as recommended by our office regarding, regarding social media.
Sure, this policy does that.
I don't agree with the initial premise that it has to exclusively relate to city business. In fact, there was a decision issued today by Judge Goldsmith in the federal district court involving a city manager's Facebook page in Port Huron. It's a little different than what we're talking- It's a little different than what we're talking about here. But that person was mixing personal Facebook page with city-related business. And the court in that, in that case decided there was not a significant amount of city business intermixed with personal Facebook materials. And that was a lawsuit brought by someone in prison challenging his being blocked on the city manager's Facebook page. It's also not, that decision binds the parties in that case. But until there's an appellate decision, and who knows if there's going to be an appeal to the Sixth Circuit, since the decision just was issued today, if there was, if that decision was upheld by the Sixth Circuit or reversed, that would be binding precedent in the Sixth Circuit, which would cover five states, including Michigan.
So, no real legal precedent as of yet, though? Like, this is all things that are being developed as we learn how social media impacts city government?
Well, there's case law, U.S. Supreme case law and other decisions that are, that have already been decided that are contained in the legal opinion, which sets forth the parameters that I already mentioned.
That was a lot of, that was a lot of legal jargon. Can you, like, can you say what you just said, like, in more plain terms?
Well, we, we have, all of the cases were cited in the legal opinion that, you know, that promote... The courts, the courts want to promote open exchange of views. And it's all under the umbrella of transparency in government. But once you open the door and the discussion becomes that of a public forum, talking about city business, that's when, that's when the rules change in terms of restricting residents' access to, to that type of material. And the city is aware that, that over the past few months, complaints have been made about people being blocked on social media platforms. And, you know, we have a, we have a citizen, we have an employee social media policy that's been in place for years. And this is something that, this is something that was requested by Councilman Bliss for us to do a legal opinion. We did that, and it sets forth very good guideposts as to what we believe counsel should follow. And, and I think the policy itself is just an overview of the bare basics of, of what council members should be mindful of if the council were to adopt the policy.
Sure. I think my input here would be that I would request, one, that we clearly define what city business is. And, two, that we, that we specifically say that it does not include our private pages. Because, I guess, for example, if someone were to put a video out there of someone putting a GPS tracker in it and share it to a public group that is shared by a lot of Madison Heights citizens, and say something like, "We should track Kim", insinuating that the group should track me with a GPS tracker, I have that person blocked. In this instance, would this social media policy make it so that I have to unblock that person who once sent me a picture, or not sent me a picture, it was his profile picture, with guns strapped to his chest, saying that he would make sure that I never got elected if it was the last thing he did? Would I have to unblock people like that? And would you say that it's very possible that residents who have complained that they're being blocked on social media because of their beliefs might be lying? And that instead have done things in other forums and said things to other people that might make someone feel like they mean them harm and mean their family harm? Or might come and give an affidavit of fact and fill it with lies? This is, these are people that I would have to unblock to give access to my private profile according to this policy. And I got to tell you, I am not on board with giving these people access. I've had members on this city council intentionally put people who have harassed me like this on boards with me.
The only response I can give you is that I think councils should not mix private Facebook pages that relate to them personally, and of course, threats. In a private Facebook page, if you're not discussing city business, you can block whoever you want. With regard, where it crosses the line, in our view, is when city business is mixed with personal Facebook page and other, other media, social media platforms, like the ones mentioned in the policy. That's, that's where, that's where the lines, that's where the line is. And it's not a good policy for councils to do that. A lot of people have private Facebook pages with pictures of their family and whatnot. And other people have their, their elected officials' page where city business is discussed. And that's, that's a better way of dealing with it. But you can't block somebody on your elected official Facebook page if it, if you're, if you're in a public forum discussing city business.
Sure. Okay. Can I, one, can we put some clarification in this, of course, discussing exactly, defining exactly what city business is? Add that, we, each city council member has their own city council page wherein they only discuss city business, so that they don't mix city business with their private page. Could that be, like, included in this policy? Because, I mean, this is something that can be resolved right away, right? Once we define clear rules of what city business is, we can make sure that that information is shared from our city council page that anyone can have access to. But that this would not allow private citizens to have access to city council members' private pages, because it violates their human rights.
City business is defined as anything relates to the business of this council or this city. That's, that's as best I can do in terms of...
Is that sharing about, like, restaurants that I visit in the city? Is that sharing, just like, sharing a post that today is, there's a city council meeting? I mean, we have to define the parameters of what that is, or else anybody can cherry pick. And people do what it is that they want to penalize you for.
Well, I, I would say that sharing information about your opinion on restaurants is something personal, as opposed to talking about what's on a council meeting agenda, what decisions council have made, what issues are coming up. That's clearly city business.
Sure, sure, sure. But there are some things that might be challenged, that might not be considered. And is, are we, as a city, able to handle that capacity of challenges? I see it says, "Council members' social media posts in their capacity as an elected official are the property of the state of Michigan, therefore should not be deleted and must be maintained in compliance with the city's record retention schedule." I, for one, know that the record retention in our city is not, it's a best strong suit. And this is going to bring in a ton more records that people are going to, like, make sure that the city is keeping track of. Is our city able to handle the capacity of the complaints and everything that might come from this?
Well, I can tell you that your public comments in a public forum are discoverable, they're subject to FOIA. It's just like, just like counsel having a discussion in a, in a public forum about anything relating to city business. That, and when it says it's the records of the state of Michigan, it's because we're a subdivision of the state of Michigan, and those records have to be kept. And you get into a litigation posture, and those, those posts are all going to be subject to discovery and to disclosure under the Freedom of Information...
The question that I had, Mr. Sherman, is that, does our city government, the employees and staff, have the capacity to keep track of that now? To add that on to their plate of what they already do? I'm not sure how these records are found and kept and reported, and how they're stored. That's just the question I have about that.
There's so many social media sites, I don't think it would be possible for city staff to keep all the comments. And that's a concern. That's a concern. It's one thing when you're doing something personally, it's another thing when you're talking about city business in a public forum, and that's where the line is.
Your Honor?
Please, Mr. Bliss.
If I'm, just to clarify, that's a, a good point. When, when we've had records FOIAed, it has happened sometimes where the records included, if there were text messages sent, if there were Facebook messages sent, if there were emails on your personal email. Would this be the same discovery that we've done on that for the last probably 20-plus years, since those avenues were in?
The staff would be contacting you to report back to us what it is. And if you deleted it and it went to litigation, they would FOIA or actually send the information to Facebook or whatever social media platform you're on, just like we would send it to Verizon or AT&amp;T or...
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
That part, that part's not really new. That's, that's been the case. And that's why, that's why counsel's been cautioned about certain things relating to reply all emails and whether... Because counsel must do its deliberations here at the table and not on social media. Or any media platform, for that matter. Texting, whatnot.
Please.
You all set? Okay. And you all wonder why I stay the hell off there as much as I can. I mean, I, I have a private site and I have a, a console site. But on my personal site, it's mostly devoted to pictures of my great-grandchildren and dogs being rescued, generally. I think I used to post some newspaper articles, so maybe I contaminated it. But I can guarantee you going forward, I'm sticking with the kids and dogs. I, I, I will refer back to two things, the original legal opinion, which I know is not common in the public, and the statement by Ms. Clark at the la, I think it was the last meeting, or whenever it was, when she generally outlined her position on, on this. I, I did chat with a couple of attorneys who are familiar with this, beyond just, including our own. And a couple had prior experience as city attorneys. And not distant, but very close. Warren, Royal Oak, and I forget where else. But I will tell you that this policy and the general concept of it is not as aggressive as several communities are currently looking at. They are a little tougher on this. I will tell you, having gone through the conversation with a number of the folks involved in this, I'm not sure that public pages, like we have, are compatible with, with the Open Meetings Act provisions. And I say it for this reason. Ms. Clark hung a lot of her argument the last time on the fact that she wasn't banning anybody. It was the Facebook or guidelines that were being, well, that's how I took it. And it's really indifferent, if, if you read the attorneys, pardon me, if you read the legal opinions and you read the court decisions, they really don't care who the hell threw a resident off of a website. It's indifferent. They were thrown off. And they were denied access to the discussion. So, I, I, I'm not convinced in my own mind, and it made up my mind about getting into all the other stuff, you know, the, the forums and the stuff like that. You couldn't pay me to get in that right now. No, seriously, you could not pay me. But I, as far as the, the overall on what can be said and what can't be said, I assume it's, it's essentially the same rule as our microphone. Whatever plays there would play online. I mean, as far as if I make a threat against somebody, either direct or indirect, I assume my next call is dispatch or something, you know? But I, I mean, my question would be, how are you going to handle it if somebody threatens you at the podium? Well, whatever you would do there. But, but this whole business of, of, you know, all of these pages, I, I can't conceive people sitting for an hour or two in front of a computer every day just, you know, essentially, in my opinion, a lot of it is gossiping. And it, and what happens is you get a lot of that keyboard courage. And I'm sure you've received a lot of that, where they, you know, at three o'clock in the morning, "Yeah, I'm going to tell this council person what I think of her", you know? And I'm going to...
It's not funny, though.
No.
No, they're, they're correct.
You know, but I also didn't wander into it either. I mean, I made, I, I made a conscious decision to, to try to, to conduct my business in a certain way, in, in terms of what forums I get into, what, what exchanges I make. And now, I'm not saying the victim is the responsible party here, but I will tell you that I can introduce you to 10 people who would say that the opposite is true. Do I believe them? I don't know. I wasn't on there. I didn't hear a thing. There was, in fact, one of the letters tonight made reference to an exchange between a commissioner and, and members of the public. And, and I'm thinking to myself, you know, I read all the exchanges. And, you know, it all depends on where you draw the line, you know, in time. I mean, they, they kind of drew the line from Ju, June 1st, 1st. They finally got this person to, to react, and they, you know, they acted rude and stupid. But I can't ignore the previous 18 months. But that's that he said, she said thing that you get into on, on the Internet. And I'm just not playing that game. Look, it's very simple. As, as members of the council, we have certain responsibilities. We have certain things we can do. And I guarantee you that there are aspects of it I do not like. I, I'm not a big fan of all the provisions of the Open Meeting Act or in the, the documents. But it's the law, it's the oath I took, and I've got to do it the way it's supposed to be done. So I'm not going to throw anybody off my sight for telling me what they really think of me. It's probably what my wife told me last night, anyway. But, and as far as it goes, there are sections that I was not crazy about in the, in the media, in this particular thing. The resolution. But I think as opposed to this versus going forward with nothing, especially as things are going these days, I think, I think this is a good safety net to at least establish a, a baseline. I would have no problems with, including in my motion, a, um, letters from the attorney's office, defining as best they can what's city business. But I, I, there's no reason to hang this up for that. That's going to be, that would be the subject of a court case, anyway. You know, because I might say, "I wasn't, you know, I was talking about federal government taxation or something", but, you know, was that really city business? I don't know.
Your Honor, just, just to add one thing. Councilman Corbett, were you, were you done with your comment?
Yes.
In one of the cases cited, which is Evans versus Newton, a U.S. Supreme Court case, and Pleasant Grove City versus Summons, a 2009 Supreme Court case, they, they, the court said that when a council member discusses meeting agendas, community events, or policy matters relevant to their role as a city official through private channels, that constitutes government action creating a public forum. And a government actor, namely the elected officials, cannot use the subterfuge of claiming to be a private citizen to avoid the First Amendment obligations imposed on the government preventing the restriction of speech. So that's how the court cases kind of define what city business is.
Your Honor, I was, if I could just amend my comment, if I'm, I'm sorry, just that. I was going to say, there, there is a responsibility, and I'm, I'm not talking out of school when I tell this story. You all remember the Myers Project at 13 and John R. Now, there were, it was a protracted legal issue, and most of us would go to sleep if we weren't being paid for litigating it. But there was one issue that came up, and it's, and it is on point. We had a, a member of the, the city, a commissioner, who, who, who was supposed to be neutral in his role on the zoning board and possibly on planning. And he made public comments that, that clearly showed he was anything but. And my point of this story is that I love the guy, I grieve his passing to this day, but he couldn't shut up. And, and a lot of times, that's really what it is. As it was, he, he did create a serious problem for the city when in front of the judge, the judge is saying essentially, "What are you running, a kangaroo court down there?", you know? And it, and it became a factor in the reason that that case, not, there was a lot of stuff going on, but that was a factor. So the point of the matter is, is what we say matters. It does have consequences. And we need to be cognizant of it, whether we're online here or talking to a reporter, I guess, as I've learned many times the hard way.
Your Honor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Your Honor?
So, I have a few things to say about this. First of all, whenever I look at a policy or something that we're, we're considering, you know, I always ask myself the question, "What is this working to address?", right? What is the actual problem that we're trying to fix here? And, you know, we've heard a lot of different public comments about things that are not addressed in this whatsoever, right? So, there is a bunch of things that people get angry about, about specific, like, forum groups on Facebook that are not, are not run by the city, do not have any kind of city business, like, official capacity whatsoever. But, you know, there's a lot of residents that... But, you know, there's a lot of residents that participate, and they share ideas and stuff like that. But, you know, beyond the idea that, you know, if we have a council member who is an admin on that, does that now make that forum a city business? Or is it now, is it still just a public forum that's like it says town square-
Private group, open to the public.
Or is it a private group? Right, I understand. But what I'm saying is, you know, it starts to get into the nitty-gritty of all of that stuff, which is not defined or addressed in this policy whatsoever. And it can't be necessarily, because, you know, like, on somebody's personal page, you can have public posts, and you can have private posts, and you can block people, and you can do all these different things. But, so, we're talking here not about, you know, we're not getting down into the nitty-gritty of, like, you have to make every post you make on your thing public, but on your private page, but there's, and then each one of these is different. Like, TikTok is going to be way different, and like, you have to allow comments. Like, there is all of these things that are, once you get down into the nitty-gritty of how these social media platforms work, and how they are individual, private companies that, you know, have their own rules. You know, I feel like this, this policy is not the best way to go about it. I don't think that it, it makes it so vague. There's some real vagaries, and then there's also, there's a few specifics, but then a lot of vagaries. And so it makes it very unclear to me about, is this actually addressing issues that people, that we need to address, or is it making new issues that are going to come up? For instance, when we're looking here at the, you know, the lines between, where's that city? I'm trying to find my line here. "Council Members Shall Be Mindful of the Risks of Social Media Communications in Regard to Michigan Open Meetings Act and Communication Between Members of the Body on Social Media, Whether Directly Between One Another or as Part as a Conversational Threat Among Multiple Parties, Be Strictly Avoided." Cool. I understand, and I have participated in training by the Michigan Municipal League that explains how that works and why, you know, that is an important aspect. Like, if I see Councilman Corbett and Councilman Geddings both weighing in on a particular thing, on a Facebook thread, I should stay back and, you know, so that there's not three of us having the same conversation on a Facebook thread so that we don't have a quorum all of a sudden. Sometimes it's hard to know if that's happening, like, if there's like 400 messages, and like, somebody commented up here, and then down here, and then like somewhere in the middle. So it's, it gets super complicated because there are so many things going on here. And so I would say, you know, I want, I think that we should have, we should have a policy that addresses conduct on social media. I absolutely agree that we should have a policy. I don't think this is the policy. I think it needs some work still. You know, there's, there's a lot of talk in part of it about, talking about the, you know, not using, that it's, okay, first of all, that council members' social media posts, as an elected official, are the property of the state of Michigan and all of that stuff. And then it goes on later to say, "Council members should not use the City of Madison Heights social media sites for campaigning purposes," which is fine. But like, it seems like a correlation, even though I don't think it is, but it seems like you're saying, it's saying, your social media site, your public site is, it belongs to the city, right? And so now it's official, but you can't use it for campaigning purposes. And so it just, it seems very, too vague there to make it make sense, if that makes sense in my explanation. Because I know most of us that have social media pages have a campaign page, and that's from that page is where we share most of our city-related things in our capacity as things, but as elected officials. But it's also where we share stuff about when we're campaigning, right? So it is not an official city page. It's our campaign page, but it's also government official. And I'll have you know, I have worked with now hundreds of various elected officials throughout the state of Michigan, specifically on their social media in different capacities, and I know every single one of them does some sort of hiding, or blocking, or curating of their page, right or wrong, because it is not completely clear on case law about how those, how they should be run. I'll just say, finally, my personal policy for social media is if I'm not going to say it to my grandmother, I'm not going to say it on social media. It's important to have that decorum, and important to have that space, and like, take three breaths before you hit return and send the message. So I completely agree that we need some sort of, some sort of policy. I don't think this is the policy. And I think that it would be helpful, also, if we were able to expand the policy, that like, code of conduct more than anything, to anybody who's serving on boards and commissions as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else on counsel have-
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
Just a couple of quick things. I didn't read that line about not using the City of Madison Heights, like, the official social media sites for campaign purposes as our pages, but I could be incorrect. I thought that was referring to the official city pages, like, the Parks and Rec page, the city page. That's, just as a clarification, before I go forward to the attorney, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'd also, I don't see that happening, because we don't have any control over the city pages as council members. So I'd also, if there's a lack of clarity, I'd be okay with even removing, removing that from this policy. My challenge in pushing, pushing it off is, at this point, I've received, I think, two different legal opinions on this through the years. Had about six closed sessions where we've had conversations about this, some with previous councils, some with this council. And a lot of it is, we've just been waiting for the case law to develop. And as the case law is developing, you know, we're seeing, you know, potential issues, you know, where is that line going to be? You know, in 2014, part of the discussion was, a lot of us were posting on our personal pages about the flood, and what has personally happened to us. You know, the line was, is it going to be something we have to vote on? And, you know, that was kind of the description that was given back then. Myself and another council member were pretty active on social media, and so we had, we had a lot of discussion about that, just trying to figure out where the line is. And I think we've consistently found, I think, as the city attorney has said, effectively, if we're going to vote on it, we have to, you know, we have to draw the line there. If it's something that would come up in this public, it's, because it's the same thing with the board and an OMA, you know, different boards. You know, I can have five members of the Arts Board, for example, at a birthday party, and it's perfectly fine. But if it's at a Town Hall for Arts and Culture, now I've broken the OMA. And I think, at least as far as my perspective on this policy, and what I'm voting for as a part of this policy, is just clarifying the same rules that we have when we're gathering in person, when we're sending text messages, when we're on email chains like Reply All's, kind of codifying that into social media as well. And I have no doubt that this is a work in progress that we will be amending probably several times as case law comes in. And it might even get thrown out if enough case law comes in that says that there's no difference, and, you know, social media is the Wild West. But I don't know what that's going to be. I just know for today, after going through this for year after year after year, I think we have to do something, especially given the most recent legal opinion that we have. So, you know, my vote will be in favor of it with the condition, and I don't know if it'll have to be in the motion, I'd be happy to make a substitute motion, but I definitely think that this should be revisited on a biannual basis, as far as a review. I don't know if it needs a formal sunset clause, but I think in fairness to the changing case law, this should be officially reviewed on a frequent basis. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I would be willing to accept that as a friendly amendment, I don't know where the second would be on that. It's fine by me.
Yes, fine.
Is there anyone else who has any discussion?
Your Honor, I just want to say, you know, I think, I feel like, as a body, we often try and make sure that the things that we are passing as a body are in the best form that they can be before we start, you know, putting our votes next to them. I want this to be better than it is before I vote for it. I'm not ready to put a flawed policy on board just to get something in there. It seems like a really bad idea, and opening us up for problems in the future. I want us to have a good policy. So I would make a substitute motion to send this back to staff and legal department for revision.
Okay, so we now have a substitute motion to have this revised by legal on this. Is there support?
I'll support.
Okay. So we now have a substitute with support. So I'm-
Your Honor, sorry, just to clarify for the motion, is that, is that a table for legal review? Is it a kill for legal review? Just the confines of the motion, for clarity.
I'm sorry, I don't know what the correct way to do it is.
I think-
I want it to go back to staff, to staff and to legal counsel to be able to give us advice and to rewrite it and look at it again.
I think that it's however long it takes.
It would be tabled indefinitely, like we did the source of income, and then we, when we get it ready, we'll bring it back.
All right.
Okay.
So-
Tabled indefinitely.
All right. So I've let all of counsel, I think, has, I'd like to say something before we go into substitute motions and whatever. I've just been waiting to make sure that everyone's had the opportunity.
Do we, for a point of order? Is that a point of order? Like, would we not have to vote on the substitute motion and then go in discussion?
We're now in discussion for the substitute motion?
Wait, doesn't that come after? Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just asking, this is my first time, like, my first season here, so I'm just asking for clarification.
Okay. So normally, I make my comments after everyone has made their comments. I want to give everybody the opportunity, but we've just got a substitute motion, and before we go into a whole new discussion, I want to be heard. So I did ask for a social media policy, and I want to be clear on why I asked for this. There's two things that we need to address. One is, Councilwoman Clark has said that she's been receiving threats, and she wants to block people who are threatening her. And she should have that right. We should all have that right. So want to make sure that if she's receiving threats from someone, she doesn't have to friend them, so to speak, okay? But the large reason that I asked for a social media policy is because of the number of complaints I have received over the year, probably more than a year at this point, regarding, we have about, on Facebook alone, there's about 30 different forums that are dedicated in some manner to the city. And I have received multiple complaints from residents who were kicked out of those forums. And my response has always been, it's a private forum, it's not the city. If Mrs. Marsh ran a forum on behalf of the city, she would not be allowed to kick people out. But that's not what these are. These are privately-run forums. And the issue has become that residents cannot join these forums to find out what's happening in the city. And they may not be official, but residents don't see that difference. They see that they are about the city, and they see that one of the council members is running this page, or these page, some of these pages, not all, there's about 30 of them. But some of them are being run by council members. And so then the question is coming to me, what are you doing about it? I can't see. You need to do something. And there's nothing that I can do. My response has always been, you need to let the official, no, you need to let the admins, no, you can join another page, there's 30 of them. But what's happening is people are finding, finding that they're not finding out information, that there's things going on that are on these pages. And so this is why I feel we need to have a policy. Having said that, we need to make sure that people who are threatening other people, you know, that they do get banned. So this is why I asked for this. I'm also extremely concerned about the legal predicament that the city is being put into, potentially, because the concerns that have come to me are that their First Amendment rights are being squashed by a council member. I am not a lawyer, but if I understand everything that's going on here, the feeling is that their First Amendment rights are being squashed. And just as an example, this we all recognize as a public forum. If someone were to get up and start saying something that I don't like, I don't say to them, I don't like what you have to say, I'm kicking you out. I can't do that. I'm not allowed to do that. And if I did, that would be viewpoint discrimination. All right? And that's what appears to be, these are the complaints that I'm getting, is that there is viewpoint discrimination that's going on inside these private forums by a council member. And I am trying to get out ahead of this, so that the city is not put in some kind of legal predicament. So I don't know. This is probably not perfect, but it's something, it's a start. We need to do something. You know, I think that council members would all be wise to not comment on any of these threads, as Councilor Warbuck said. You know, if there's 400 comments, you don't know if two council members have already commented. So I just don't comment. I comment very little on social media these days, because I don't want to put the city or myself in that kind of legal jeopardy. So I'm fine with this as a start, but I agree with Councilwoman Bliss that this needs to be reviewed. So with respect to the substitute motion, I would be voting no, and if it fails, reverting back to voting yes for the original motion. I would now like to open it up for discussion from everybody else. I just wanted to be able to say my-
Welcome to the wacky world of chairing.
I wanted to make sure that my views were out there before they got buried again, because I'm now going to speak last again. So anyone else have any comments on the substitute? Councilor Warbuck, did you have any?
I think I've made my comments clear. I think it's a fatally flawed policy, and it's not addressing the issues that are the issues that are coming up. It's not. It's not addressing the issue of, like, well, can this person, can a left-wing official be the moderator in a neighborhood forum? That is not addressed here. That, and so, these things will continue, because it's not addressing the issues that have come up over and over again from our various residents, because this policy isn't it. It's not, it's not addressing those issues as we need them to. And it would be, I think, I think it would be foolish of us to adopt a policy that is, like, we know it's not good, and it's not actually doing what we want it to do, but we've got to do something. Like, that's a bad idea. Like, why would you, I just think it's a bad idea to do something, because you've just got to do something. And I think, I just want to finish this thought, excuse me, that, you know, if we are in the, sorry, I got distracted. If we are, if we are in the, in the practice of creating, or in the process of creating a policy, right, I think the legal opinion that we, that I understood, was that, like, once something is brought to your attention, you have to address it, or it can become a problem in the future, right? And I think that's why, why the Ms. Mayor and Mr. Bliss, I think that's why part of the urgency is here today. But I think we are in the process of addressing this, but rushing to the table with something that is this flawed would be foolish. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Mr. Sherman?
Your Honor, I wanted to just make one comment to, for the benefit of counsel, maybe just to clarify what I meant when I said crossing the line. There is, and the case law is- There is, and the case law is evolving. The City of Inchester just got sued by the ACLU regarding the city blocking people on Facebook. That just happened in July, but here's where, here's how you get to the line. And this is already decided by appellate, federal appellate courts. In one case, the defendant was a, was a board, a county Board of Commissioners, county, on the County Board of Commissioners in, in Virginia. And her Facebook page shared information about family, personal life, campaign activities, roles as a commissioner, serving the community, and so on. And where the, what the court said was, once you take a private Facebook page and you take it from being a personal social media account because you include content that related to her role as a county commissioner and promoted outreach with constituents on issues of municipal concern, at that point, she is, is acting as a state actor under the color of the state, and that's when a public forum is created. And once a public forum is created, it has to be accessible to everyone. So that's, that's when blocking someone in a private social media page that has become a public forum, that's when you get into a constitutional challenge, a violation of someone's First Amendment rights or viewpoint discrimination, things of that sort. So that's why I've been cautioning counsel regarding mixing apples and bananas in terms of what their personal Facebook pages, whatever it is, contains. I hope that's helpful, just an understanding where the line is.
Your Honor? I just wanted to, to pick up on a point that Mr. Bliss brought up. Let me just say that the perfect policy would probably be the one that I wrote, but none of y'all would probably like it anyway, so I wouldn't get a second. My point is, is that there are some things that I wish were different, but I believe, based on my research, it does actually reflect the state of the law at the moment. The problem, I think, the thing that gives Mr. Bliss and others uncertainty, is that it's an evolving situation of case law. And that's just how this is. And every, every case, you know, we had one here that just, that you were talking about earlier, that sounded like it went against, like, a ton of other decisions in the federal level. But what everybody has to remember, based on my many hours of watching Court TV, is that it's all context-related. It will depend on who said what about what in every instance. I mean, you try to draw lines about when do I, when do I create a public forum? When am I acting as Bob, you know, grandfather and Bob Consulman? The best you can do, and I think this is what this policy does a decent job of, is that it sets some guideposts, it sets some boundaries, it sets some reminders. Is it perfect? No. Do I think there will be changes required down the line? It's simply the environment we're in. But this thing is getting out of hand, and I'm not even a participant at, at the scale of probably everybody else up here. And when I'm hearing about it here, and I'm, you know, sticking with fuzzy animals online, and, you know, something wrong. That's all. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Thank you.
I just wonder, so I'm, you know, this is my third year in, it's my first season on counsel, and I've seen the men on counsel make suggestions to have the lawyers go back and look at some policies before we accept them. And everyone on counsel, give everyone the professional courtesy to go do that and bring it back to the table so we have something that is balanced to what counsel is looking for, to put at the table to a vote. So I guess my question is, what's the rush? If one, two, three, four of us agree that this isn't a perfect policy and that it could use a little bit of tweaking, what's the rush and what's the harm in sending it back to the attorneys to make those changes? Why are we rushing to get it done with knowing a, a large majority of us knowing that there are changes necessary to be made?
Your Honor, about the injection of gender politics into this, that needs to stop right now. Please don't ever do that again, number one. Number one. Number two, as a matter of fact, it did go back to the attorneys twice at the request of the mayor, who the last time I checked is a woman. So please control yourself on that if you could.
I, I'm only saying this because the instances that this has happened, it has been the gentleman that said it. It's not a sexist thing, it was just a fact of matter that the gentleman brought it up.
Councilwoman Clark, Mr. Corbett is correct. I am a woman, born and raised, and I asked for this. And I did not ask for this because I am a woman. I asked for this because my constituents have continually complained to me, and I have no recourse. This is the only recourse to have some kind of policy that hopefully everyone will be following.
I'm sorry, I didn't even address the fact that you turned it, I'm addressing this specific policy that we're looking at right now. Four of us agree that there are tweaks that could be made. Why not take the professional courtesy to send it back to the attorneys and bring it back with those tweaks made? When, what's the rush? We couldn't do it in two weeks.
Okay, so I would like to actually address that one as well. So this is not being rushed. I actually asked to do this a month or two ago, and I was voted down. I asked to do this. So if you want to tweak it, we can tweak it now. I would like to see a line in here about the issues that I have been receiving, which is regarding council members moderating private pages.
Your Honor?
And then after that, Councilor Warbach or Councilwoman Clark, if you have a tweak you'd like, I'm happy to hear that.
Your Honor, I believe right now our discussion is about whether or not we're tabling this item.
All right, then if we are done the discussion on the substitute motion, we can do a roll call vote. Clark, can you please read back what the substitute motion is that we will be doing a roll call vote on?
Yes, the substitute motion is to table the policy indefinitely for legal review until legal can do an additional review.
All right.
And report back.
All right, that is the motion if, on the-
Your Honor, can we explain the yea and nay? The yea is for, please, for the city clerk to-
The yays would be to table indefinitely. The nays would be to, would revert it back to, if the nays succeed, then the, the original motion would be voted on.
Just for clarification for the public.
Are there any other questions for clarification? So if this votes, if this passes, the substitute passes, it will go to legal. If this does not pass, we revert back to the original motion. Roll call, what you said?
Roll call, please. Councilwoman Bliss?
No.
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilman Geddings?
No.
Councilor Warbach?
Yes.
Mayor Potempsoldus?
No.
Mayor Greystein?
I vote no. Substitute motion fails. We are back to the original.
Anyone have a discussion on the original again? Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor, just, just a couple of clarifications on my end. The first, I think I was concluded in Councilwoman Clark's, I guess, the, four people believe that there are errors and, and issues in this. Let me just be very clear in my point. I think that this is evolving case law, and there's going to be more added in sections that are removed. But I, you know, as an active member on, on, on social media who this does impact, you know, as the, you know, the, the council rep, the person who brought in ITAC, and, and, you know, have been talking about this and technology in the city for eight years now, I think we need to do something right now. I think we owe it to, we owe it to our residents and frankly ourselves to not catch the city up in a potential lawsuit. We've had, we've had cases that we've settled in the last three years that part of the reason why was tied into statements that were made. And I won't get into it because I can't get into it, but any statement we made, as Councilman Corbett said, any, anything that we make, anywhere that we make it, whether it's on Facebook, on our email, on our private email, in public with five people listening, if we make a statement on anything official to the city, that's where that line is drawn. And so I think what this policy does is it at least gives us some guardrails so that those of us that are posting on social media understand some of that difference. What is our personal, what is our private? And it's completely up to, up to us individually for how much risk that we want to have. You know, what are we willing to post, where, where is that going to be? And, and I think too, it gives us two other areas in this where there's no issues. The first is that if the council member makes a mistake or error in communication, it shall be corrected as soon as the official is made aware of it. So no actions, no, no problems happen. The council member is, as far as I'm reading this, the attorney can let me know. But as far as I'm reading this, the council member is notified that there is an issue. We'll have a chance to discuss that with our city attorney who works for us as a council, get that advice, make the decision what to do about it. And then even if there were an issue and it were ignored, the, the body of council to censure would still have to have a majority vote on an individual discussion for whatever that was. So I, I think that there's a lot of mechanisms for our flexibility as we learn here. And the one amendment that I wanted was adopted into this to have that biannual review automatically baked into this. So we're always going to be on top of the most relevant case law, as we have been for the past couple of years. It just kind of codifies it so this doesn't get adopted and, you know, become an issue for us in two years. So I'm, I'm in favor of passing it. It provides some really good advice and guardrails that I will personally use. And I don't think that, I don't think that it's perfect, but only because the case law will change as of even tomorrow, and we're going to have to keep editing it for the case law.
Your Honor? I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Mr. Corbett?
If I'm, if, I know we need to stay on topic. If I'm wandering off, stop me. I wanted to address a comment you made about what you wanted a line in here about administrators, council members, if they can be an administrator or something. I, I'm not, that's a bridge too far for me. There is no, there's no, to me, there's no evidence that that's the problem. I mean, you want my political opinion on that idea? I, you know, but as far as a matter of my research and my understanding of policy, what, I, I don't think we can say that, ma'am. I think that's, that's not the problem. It may be a minefield that you're walking into. But, but simply a, a member of council opening up to invite views and promote the community, you know, that's not a bad thing. So I, I'm, I'm happy with the policy as it is right now, and we'll see what happens down the road. Thank you.
All right, is there any other comments, any other council members? All right, so Clark, can you read back what the motion is? And I believe that we're including Mr. Bliss's request for a six-month review.
Yes, just give me one second to find back. The motion would be to adapt the following social media policy for elected officials, and then the wording would be included, and to have the policy officially reviewed on a biannual basis.
All right, thank you. All right, if there is no more discussion, then I'm going to ask the clerk to do a roll call vote for this.
Okay, Councilwoman Clark?
No.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Warbach?
No.
Mayor Potempsoldus?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bliss?
Yes.
Mayor Greystein?
I vote yes, motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have D three, the DPS Director, the Road Commission for Oakland County Winter Maintenance Agreement. Ms. Marsh?
Provided for counsel's consideration is the agreement with Oakland County for the city to provide winter maintenance to fourteen mile from Campbell to Dequender, John R. from fourteen mile to the Red Run Drain, and twelve mile from Dequender to Campbell. This contract allows for $7,120.91 per mile for four and five-lane roads, $8,782.89 for six-lane roads. The total amount of this contract is $41,790.54, which reflects a 2% increase from last year. Staff and I recommend that City Council approve this contract and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor, I move that City Council approves the contract with the Oakland County Road Commission for Oakland County Winter Maintenance and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Great, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? Mr. Greystein?
Mr. Geddings?
Yes, I'll support.
Great, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the regular city council meeting minutes from September thirteenth. What is the wish of counsel?
Your Honor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the meeting minutes from the fifteenth, I think that was, didn't I see that? Yeah, thirteenth, I'm sorry, be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Clark?
I'll support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, say no. Motion carries, thank you. That concludes the regular business of this council, so I invite closing comments. Starting with Mr. Corbett.
Yeah, just one item, it's, it's almost like a coded message to certain people who may be watching this evening. Council received a, but there's, there is a reason for why I'm a little bit limited in what I can say. We, council received a letter today, or, or, over the weekend, from some folks living over at Solberg Towers regarding some issues. It was anonymous, although they have addresses that they're going to follow up. There, it was otherwise anonymously signed without, you know, without getting into any of the details, I think, it's like anything else. And, but I mean, the principle's the same. If, if you've got a problem with your neighbors, or with the building, or with construction, or whatever your issue is, we have to have a person to talk to so we know what we're dealing with. And I know the city is reaching out on this issue. And, but I, if people who have complaints or concerns, we will, we would ask you to contact, now, I'm sure you could contact the mayor, any member of council if you were more comfortable, but ideally, you know, talk to Ms. Marsh or the folks over in code enforcement, and they'd be more than happy to, to engage with you, tell you what we can do, what we can't do, and what's, what's fair and what's not, so. Other than that, it just, you know, I, I leaned over after our discussion on the social policy, and I can't tell you how much I hated that conversation. It, you know, you had all sorts of weirdness going on there. I, I don't know. I mean, you know, no, you do not win an election online, I'm sorry. I know there's a difference of opinion on that. The, the people who are, do vote, they are a constituent, they are an element, but, but it's not the be-all and end-all. And all I know is that, you know, years ago, I, I got, I got on a academic forum years ago, and it was just starting with arguing over economic policy. And, yeah, I'm kind of boring, but you would be surprised how nasty it eventually got. And these are academics, these are people with, you know, PhDs, and you imagine that they're in the long dresses with the wool suits, and the guys are in three-piece with a bowtie. I know it's important, I know it's a fact of life. I just think we all need to be very, I think it goes back to what we heard from another, a number of people tonight. I think it's just, I'm not going to say anything about you online, I won't say to your face. And I'm five foot six, so you can guarantee I'm limited in what I'm going to tell you. But, but I, I, I hope that we can start to move forward. I realize some of this is informed by the fact we're in the middle of an election season, which is, I always used to comment to staff about when it was a different cycle, when we had a primary in September and election in November. Come April, when the petitions were out, I, I always used to say, well, the weird season's starting. And it never failed to, it never disappointed, and it was true. Anyway, that's all for tonight. And like I said, the folks over at Solberg, if you can reach out a little bit more to us and let us know what you're thinking. Ms. Marsh will be in the office in the morning, because she's got no other place to be. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bliss?
Yeah, Your Honor, just a couple of things tonight. I want to highlight a couple of birthdays that are important to me. The first is the Arts Board turns four, I think, today. So that, that has been absolutely awesome. The only reason I know is because of social media told me, because it had a, yeah. I, I love that in Google, in my Google Photos. that in Google and my Google Photos. But that, that happened four years ago and honestly, I, I'm so thrilled to, to have served on that board with so many incredible people through the years. That's one of the few boards where, as we have a vacancy, we already have three people ready to fill it. And it just keeps, you know, cycling through with some new ideas, some just exciting and incredible people. And so, you know, happy birthday to the Arts Board and thank you to everybody who's ever served and served on the board or donated to the events and murals and everything, sang karaoke with us, everything. You've made our city just a little bit better and, you know, for that, I'm entirely grateful. I also want to wish a belated happy birthday to, to my wife, Ally, whose birthday was yesterday. She turned 29 again. And see, she looks, she, she's the life of the party, looks better than she did on her very first 29th birthday and, you know, I'm just utterly blessed to be able to have somebody so supportive of, you know, I'm, I'm a terrible golfer, so, so this is, you know, serving, serving the city is, is how I spend my, my free time. And she's been incredibly supportive of that through the years, through campaigns and, you know, some campaigns are a little more difficult than others. And so just hats off to, to my wife and, you know, she'll, she'll watch us back on YouTube and, you know, her face will get a little red, but I'm very appreciative of, of her and the support that she's given through the years and I wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you. Mr. Geddings?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Sherman?
No comments this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Ms. Marsh?
I have two quick things. For those that may be interested in the Civic Center Plaza project and the fire station too, at the last meeting we had at the senior center, we had a request to have another night meeting. So we're going to have one next Monday, October the 4th, at 5:30 at the library. So anybody who's interested, please show up to that. And the fire station open house is going to be two Saturdays from now, October the 9th, from 10 to 2.
Thank you. Anything from the clerk's office?
Yes. The absentee ballots are now available in the city clerk's office. For those of you that have already completed and returned your applications, you should see your ballots in the mail shortly. I heard some of them were delivered on Saturday. We just mailed them on Friday, so I think that's pretty good. And if you need an application, please call our office or go online and fill one out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Warback?
All right, so I've got a few things here. I'll try and go fast. Last time we talked about the Source of Income Non-Discrimination Ordinance. Staff has been able to go back and it's going to be coming back on the agenda for the October 11th. And I'm really looking forward to that conversation continuing, so it's not going to be, I'm sure it won't be like before, but I really am. I'm excited about that coming back up for consideration. And then we've got, so the Environmental Citizens Committee had planned a native plant sale for last, for Sunday. It got canceled because our vendor with the plants, she was bringing all the plants, her tire blew out, wasn't able to get all the way here. And so it has been rescheduled for this coming, I believe it's Sunday, the October 3rd, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. back here in the parking lot behind City Hall, between City Hall and the police station, kind of in the corner by the park. And so please come out, purchase some native plants for your gardens. There's going to be fall-specific plant stuff to plant for the fall. So come out and get it and funds will go towards doing more with the ECC in the city. I'll skip those. All right. If you haven't been to the library since the new patio is put out as part of the Kaboom Grant, there is more to come, but what has been put out so far is really exciting, just lovely. So well done to our DPS department for the work there. Beautiful stamped concrete and the chairs and a little pathway. Eventually it will have beautiful murals and additional things. I think the musical instruments are out there now. So just please, I encourage residents to go out, check out the, the library and enjoy this new feature that we have. There is a document shredding event that's hosted by Oakland County. This, or 10/6, so October 6th, at the Water Park, I believe it starts at, I didn't write it down. I should have written it down. I think it starts at 2:00 p.m. 2:00 p.m. At the Water Park parking lot. Bring your stuff to shred, they'll throw it in the shredder and it, you just stay in your car. You don't even have to, to get out of your car, drive through as much as you want. Yes. All right. Coming up, there is the pumpkin walk. The Arts Board is hosting a pumpkin walk. So all of your cute little costume kids, please come out and enjoy that. It is going to be on October 29th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Great, it's such a fun event. So keep an eye out for information about that on social media. And I believe it's also on the city's website and other places so that you can keep, keep informed about that as, as it continues to develop. The Arts Board is also doing a fundraiser this week of a painting party. It's like basically popcorn and paint. And you know those like wine and painting parties that they do for grownups? Well, this is like that but for kids, but no wine, just popcorn. And, but it's going to be some very cool big canvases that they'll be led through, a whole process to paint these beautiful canvases together as a group. It's $15 per child and you can sign up very easily on our city's website. You can pay online or bring a check in or pay the city that way. There's also the opportunity, if you love that idea and you hope that everybody gets a chance to do it, but you know that there's going to be some families can't afford the $15, and you want to help, we want to help you help. So we will take sponsorships for individuals, if they want to sponsor a child, be able to participate in the painting party. Please go to the Arts Board page. It will, there's a link where you can sign up to sponsor a child for this event. I'm trying to go fast. There is a pumpkin painting party with the Parks and Rec Department on the 23rd. So I think that everybody who does pumpkin painting party should finish their pumpkins and then pack them up and go to the pumpkin walk a couple, like a week later. Synergy. Right. And, sorry, I'm the only one that thinks I'm funny tonight. All right, those are, the other ones were already taken, so I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark?
Nothing for me, thanks.
All right, thank you. Mayor Potempsoldas?
Thank you, Your Honor. Probably everybody guessed that I'm not on social media and I'm damn proud of it. I don't, I think I was on there for maybe three months, a few years ago and I said, well, that's enough for me. So I, I do appreciate everyone showing up, coming, giving your, your opinion. I think the first four years that I was on council, Mark and Corbett can contest it or, or back me up that nobody showed up. So we were always like, you know, why isn't people here? But, but I'm glad that to see everybody does turn out now. I think maybe because it's a lot more drama going on, I don't know. But, and I think that Boomerly case really turned the tides too, where, I mean, for like a year or something, they just kept showing up, so. But anyhow, I, you know, this whole, it's too much drama for me. I just, it really is. You know, it's been, the first six years were pretty smooth, but it's kind of getting a little, yeah, whatever. But, you know, a little draining. It's frustrating for everybody. It's draining and frustrating for everybody. I understand that. All right, but we'll, we'll get through it. We'll work through it. We'll try to be fair as, as we always have, that I've been on council. There was, there was a lady that spoke in, in the audience. I'm not quite sure what she was talking about, but if I could ask the city manager to follow up on what those accusations she were, she was making, because I don't, you know, I think that's something we should really look into if there is any validity to it. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of things. So one of the things I want to just take a moment to recognize that we have a staff member who is actually deployed overseas right now. And when we do our Veterans Day service, I'm not sure what we're going to do, but we always do something unless we have a weather, weather event or COVID. I want to make sure that we recognize the staff member and maybe take a moment to recognize the service members who died in Kabul last month and hopefully there won't be any new casualties. But as was mentioned tonight, I was born and raised in Canada and we don't have Veterans Day, we have Remembrance Day, which is the same day. It's a bit different though. And, and so I always grew up where we remembered people like my dad, who was a veteran. He, he fought in World War II. And I know that's different here, but just, it's just a thought that this year, you know, it's 20 years since 9/11, just giving our, our veterans who are veterans, but then those that we've lost, just giving them some kind of recognition. So just not sure what's happening with the planning of that. That's another month and a half away. The recreation brochure came out and just want to put a bug in somebody's ear, I'm not quite sure who. There was a couple of things in that there was one of the programs, it was for toning, I guess body toning. And there was just a bit of wording there that I had a few people reach out to me, just, it wasn't very sensitive, the way that it was worded. So I don't know who usually looks these things over, but if we could just get a second eye on those to make sure that we're not offending people, that we're not doing fat shaming, that would be great. And then the second part of that is I had somebody who reached out to me just asking, are we doing any kind of programs for people who have differing abilities? And I know that this, or I thought that this was something that the Human Relations and Equity Committee was looking at, that they have a subcommittee that was looking at different policies and that accessibility was one of the items they were looking at. So I don't know what's happening with that, but if, just I guess for the next round of programs, just if whoever could maybe take a look to see if there is some way that we can be a bit more inclusive with the programs for everybody of different abilities. On this Saturday, October 2nd, the Youth Assistance is having a drive-through movie night at Red Oak Soccer Complex. It is, they are going to be showing Hocus Pocus sometime for, for Halloween. So sorry, Councilor Warback, not a pumpkin theme there though, but it is Halloween themed. And I've had a few people reach out to me regarding the corner of John R. and 11 Mile. Yes, there is now a rendering there. The owner has finally put that up. It is not set in stone what it is going to be, but it does look like it is going to be some kind of what's called mixed use, which is having some kind of retail on the bottom with some kind of housing upstairs. So that's something that, we've been working on that for quite a while. I, I remember five years ago going to a town hall about the DDA and I said, oh, I didn't even know we had a downtown. Because, you know, I, I didn't know. And then obviously now I'm on the DDA and whenever we meet, we talk about how we really need to have something at that corner because it's really hard to have an anchor, which is just the vacant plot of land. So it's one of those things that we've been slowly working on over the last couple of years. And finally, he put the rendering up over the weekend, I think. So stop by, take a look. It's, it's not going to look exactly like it is, but it's just to give everybody an idea. When I talked to him, the thought was that they would be building it sometime next year. I don't have any kind of date on that and who knows because I know that COVID keeps delaying things. But it's nice to see that that's being worked on. It's nice to see all the fruits of your labor, so to speak. I appreciate everybody who spoke this evening and I appreciate all the comments from council this evening. The next meeting is going to be October 11th. The time is now 9:34. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good night.
[inaudible] Uh-oh.